Let's rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President here.
President Headland.
Here.
Trustee McNally.
Here.
And we were informed that trustee Parr and trustee Clements are unavailable this evening.
Thank you, and I'll share that Margaret Parr and Peggy Clements are working the polls today, so we thank them for their service. They are clearly civic-minded, good citizens, so that's where they are this evening. And if anybody is at home right now watching this live, first of all, we thank you for doing that. Second of all, if any of you have not voted, please go do so. I believe the polls are open until nine. The next meeting for the Haldane Board of Education will be on Tuesday, November 17th, at 7:00 PM, right here in the auditorium, the small gym, and our workshop topic will be a technology update, so we look forward to that. And that's all I have to share. I'll turn over to Dr. Banante.
Great, thank you, Jen. I'm going to move my mask for my comments. You know, whenever we had a great conference day today, and I wanted to speak to that, and part of the remarks I shared with the staff this morning was our role in the creation of an informed citizenry, and I think there's an important connection between our public schools and what goes on here each day and our democracy. In particular, you know, trying to establish young adults like Doug and his classmates who are people who are willing to navigate the very complicated landscapes that they're going to encounter in their lives, whether it be in government, medicine, education, running a business, whatever our kids choose to pursue after Haldane. And I was listening to the historian and author John Meacham recently, who spoke of his passion for studying history and how it revealed that in our past as a country that there's been things that are worth emulating, and there's parts of our history that are worth avoiding. And I think it's important, and part of today, was acknowledging the work that we've done as an organization to step back and examine our past and learn what has worked and what hasn't worked in our pursuits of doing what's best for our kids. So we stepped back last year in a big way to determine, as part of our coherence planning process, and what the essential skills and dispositions that we, or that our community felt our school district should prioritize in our work. And today was a good day to, because there really haven't been too many good days between when we finished that work last school year and the start of this school year, to lean into that. So we've put it off a couple of times out of respect for the current context, but today we found some space to really lean into it more, and I was really pleased with our staff, our staff's engagement around that, knowing that they're managing a lot right now when it comes to planning and delivering instruction for our students, whether that be our remote learners or our students who are in person each day. But we gave it, they honored the time that we committed to it, and I was really thankful for that. And in particular, and I know we'll have other points to discuss this throughout the year, we talked about our curriculum design and development process in the district and how it could be refined to connect to the Haldane essentials. We talked about our professional learning processes and structures in the district, and again, how that could be refined to connect to our long-term vision for our students, how we're supporting or how we can best support vulnerable populations within our schools. All very good work directly related to our coherence plan in a space that we really haven't had in the past seven or eight months or so since we completed that work last February or March or so. So that was great. Appreciate certainly the time that was spent on that today. I would like to just mention a few COVID-related items, as has been a standing agenda item for us and will continue to be. First, I shared with the board feedback from families that we received a couple of weeks ago. It took us a little time to digest that, and each of our principals sent a letter to the community, to their respective communities last week acknowledging what they heard through the review of that feedback. As you may have seen by now, it's quite extensive. There is a lot to sort through, and there's some really good themes that emerged, or important themes that emerged that we want to acknowledge, but there was some really great level of detailed feedback that was also provided that we're now sitting with as a team and really thinking through as we continue on in this work. So I just want to thank our families and as well as our staff who took the time to provide such detailed feedback, and whether it was part of the coherence process last year or now, it's something I really appreciate about our community is that when we ask for feedback, our community provides it, and they provide it in a real thorough, detailed way. It's balanced, and that's helpful to us as a leadership group in working with it and then taking whatever action we choose to take from there. We also recently had a survey of the all-remote learners or families to determine how many students would be coming back now in about two weeks' time, and we do have, or anticipate, a number of students returning. And if everybody follows through with what they expressed as their intentions just a couple of weeks ago, we'll have about 90% of our students onsite, whether it be in the K-8 in-person instruction each day or as part of that high school hybrid model. We do feel we can accommodate these students with just a few minor shifts to classroom arrangements and whatnot without getting in the way of any safety protocols that we had in place at the beginning of the school year, so that's good news. So I wanted to mention that to the board and to our community. And our focus right now as well is on supporting those families, no different than we supported all families as they entered this school year, but also providing an opportunity for those families to meet with our administrators, potentially organizing time with Dr. Corsaro as well, similar to the webinars that we were hosting in late August in anticipation of the beginning of this school year. And I'm just going to hit on two more topics just because, and then the board may have questions. We did receive information from New York State last, actually probably two weeks ago, week and a half ago or so, regarding a new strategy for how to approach outbreaks within communities throughout the state, microclusters, if you will. And this is a shift that the state has taken, and I've listened to Governor Cuomo speak about this, that luckily in New York, we're in a position where we can reevaluate our approaches to handling outbreaks of COVID in our communities. So I, at one point, familiarized the board with the regional dashboard, and that's still there. It's still active. You can go on the website and check out the regional dashboard. But the state is really shifting focus now to a county level. And there is, I don't have it up tonight, but there are county-level detailed reports that you can review that are very similar to the regional dashboard. It's just specific information for Putnam County. And that, when we're looking at microclusters, the data at the county level is really now what's going to influence a potential closure for our schools, a long-term closure for our schools. So putting aside that we may have a case and we have to shut down for a day for contact tracing or for more days for contact tracing, this is if we were to go on an extended closure because of a regionalized, or localized, I should say, outbreak. But what's important here is our county is pretty unique in that, and I think every county is, but we have these two kind of population centers in the county, but on the eastern and western end, separated by, you know, 301 and, you know, Fonstock pretty much between. So that is to say that there could be an outbreak going on in Brewster or Carmel or Mayapac that could be influencing the operation of our schools. And in our county, you know, those two communities don't really interact too much on a day-to-day basis, but that could influence whether or not we are open. And likewise, there could be something going on in Garrison or Cold Spring or Phillips Town more broadly that could be influencing schools opening in Carmel or Mayapac and Brewster. So, you know, that's just something I want the community to be aware of, the board to be aware of, as the state has refined their metrics. There are some advantages to that, but there's also some potential, actually, I shouldn't phrase them as advantages or disadvantages. There's just some nuance, I guess, to it, or dynamics within it that may very well be influencing our schools being open or not, given what plays out elsewhere in the county. Now, just to provide some extended thoughts about that, and again, this was linked to the update that I provided to the community on Friday, this document from New York State. But the measure, and the measures at which that would potentially influence us closing on a county level are whether or not there's a seven-day rolling average of an infection rate of 3.5%. That is a lower threshold than what Governor Cuomo had been talking about in the summer for the Mid-Hudson region, actually. It was 5% at that point. Now we're down to 3.5, and in addition to that, 15 new cases per day. So both things have to occur. Quite frankly, I think it'd be hard for one to occur and not the other, given the amount of testing that continues to go on in our county. But those are the two metrics that we're reviewing now, or I'm reviewing now on a daily, weekly basis. And right now, just to give you an idea, Putnam County is at an infection rate of around 1.8% as of yesterday. So again, 3.5 being the threshold, we're at 1.8. And generally, as I looked at the data, we're averaging between 10 to 12 new cases per day. So again, 15 being a new threshold in this metric, revised metrics that are being used. That would move us into what's called a yellow precautionary zone, where we would have to close schools for a period of time. We would be allowed to open schools if we entered that zone, if we had a testing program in place. The good news is that New York State will provide you with testing capabilities if you are in this zone. The bad news is that the extent of testing that has to be done, I think, makes it somewhat unrealistic to come out of that zone. So you would have to test 20% of your student and staff population each week. So for us, if you consider, we have about 1,000 students and staff, roughly, so we would have to test 200 each week ourselves. Of course, we'd have to find somehow a way to do this with people who are, have the training and the capacity to do it, but the machine, as I've learned and drilled into this a little more, can process about, if it's running, you know, efficiently, can process one test every 15 minutes. So there literally aren't enough hours, you know, in the day to, and that's with no disruption, not to mention consent that you would need in order to test and, you know, the whole process by which. So in speaking with my colleagues about this, and you can imagine, I've talked to my colleagues in Mayapac, Carmel, and Brewster, who, 20% for them is a much higher number, they still get one machine, as of right now. So it just seems very unfeasible that we would be able to facilitate that much testing were we to enter into this yellow zone. We would likely have to default to remaining closed until we were out of the yellow zone. Now, there's all sorts of implications for this, and I don't want to get too far in the weeds on it, but if Westchester or other counties that border us, Westchester, Dutchess primarily, because I don't think Orange counts, because there's a large body of water between us and Orange County, but if they were in a orange or red zone, which means their rates of infection are even higher, the number of cases each day, we would automatically, in some cases, become a yellow zone because we're a bordering county. So still sifting through a lot of this. There's a lot to digest with it, but I, most importantly, I want the community to be aware that there are updated metrics for making determinations on potential long-term closures for our school. We're studying this. We're examining what would it be required to come out of these zones. But generally, I do think the increased level of scrutiny for localized outbreaks is probably a, is a good thing. It just is a lower threshold than what we had previously had in mind, and very well, as we get into the winter months, may impact our ability to remain open in the way that we are, whether because something's happening actually in Phillips Town or elsewhere in the county. So that's that. And I, last update related to COVID, I did send a notice out today. We have, there is a, there is a New York State Schools COVID report card, where I report daily information on cases in our community, and that's, it's somewhat of a check and balance on making sure that there's accurate data being shared between the school and the Department of Health, because sometimes information comes to us before it comes to them or vice versa. So our families or community may note that we actually do have one student case and one staff case that is noted on that dashboard, both of which have occurred over the last seven days that we've been notified by, but in both cases were students or staff who were not onsite. So it did not require or necessitate a closure on our part. And quite frankly, I thought when we reported that information that it didn't end up on the dashboard in the way that it is, but seeing that it is, you know, I felt responsible to make sure our community is aware of that. These are not individuals who've had contact with our students inside of the school grounds in any way, or staff members who have. But, you know, I am seeing now, because we are starting to see some impact on our community, you know, now how that ends up on a state dashboard and what the public may see. So I want to make sure, you know, in the spirit of transparency, that we're at least notifying our community that it's there. Yes, there are cases. There's cases everywhere, but these cases have not impacted our ability to remain open. And in both cases, it's interesting. One, I was aware of through the Department of Health, the other, we were aware of because of our communication with the staff member, and we're forming the Department of Health. So that is where the lines of communication need to be open, because sometimes we're hearing things before the Department of Health is, or they're hearing things before we are. So that's been, that's been helpful to see that now over the last few days. And luckily, our student and our staff member who are impacted are resting comfortably at home, and most importantly, they seem to be doing okay, mild cases. So with that, I'll pause. Those are my four main areas I wanted to hit on tonight as it relates to COVID, just to see if there's any questions before I have one more update to share.
I have one question. You said that 90% of students are returning. Correct me if I'm wrong, a majority of the students in these first 10 weeks were in the elementary school? Is it, is it still distributed that way? Is it a majority of students not returning, or still the younger kids?
I would say now, yep. So earlier, in terms of, it's probably easier to talk about the number of students who were all remote. The majority of the students who were in the all-remote group were at the elementary level, and then there was a fair, kind of an equal distribution at the middle and high school. Now we're seeing, I think we had about 60 students approximately in that all-remote group at the elementary level. About 30 of those 60 have indicated that they would like to come back at the 10-week period. So as a percentage, it's fairly consistent now at the elementary, middle, and high school as a total percentage of students who are in versus those who are all remote.
Great, thanks.
On that, I just wanted to say that I think we all know that there are such unique reasons for all parents to choose remote or in-person, and a wide spectrum, but I see it as a real positive that so many students are interested in returning. I think that it's a real vote of confidence in how the school is taking care of our children, that we're keeping them safe, we're giving them what they need, that it's working. And so I think that's a real vote of confidence for our staff and our faculty.
Thank you, Jen. And there's been a few reports released recently as well that are, and I'm encouraged by them. I hope they hold in that, back in August, July, we were reading a lot of articles, right, about the potential issue of opening up schools as it relates to spread of the virus, and there were a few cases on college campuses very early on that were concerning. And I think we understand the nature of student interaction on a college campus is very different than the nature of interactions on a K-12 campus, and it is, this, public school reopenings have demonstrated to not yet have a dramatic impact on spread of virus inside of communities, and I'm encouraged by that. Now, on a day-to-day basis, I can see, you know, all the precautions that we're taking, but I think as reports like that come out and families educate themselves on what's going on, you know, not only in our region but elsewhere in the world, hopefully, you know, that holds to be true and families feel more comfortable having their kids come back into school. I think the winter is certainly going to be a unique time, because we've had our kids outside a lot, and now they're back inside a lot more than they had been certainly through the first two months of school. But again, I'm encouraged by the precautions that we're taking even inside as well, and we knew we were going to encounter this time of the year where we were going to have to have our kids inside. So we're there now, and we'll see, continue to see how it plays out, but generally, kids are masked, kids are distanced, we're cleaning all of the time, kids are washing their hands, community rate spread is low, and sick children are being kept at home. So those are the most, those are the two most important things. Spread in the community is low, sick children are staying at home, internally, masks, distancing, those four factors right there are the most significant factors, I think, that we can look to to ensure that spread remains low, and there is no spread within our schools.
Just a couple of things. First, I'd echo your thanks for the participation of the parents who wrote back. It was fantastic to read it and also to realize something that you said, Jen, like everyone has their own reasons. Everyone was coming at the survey from their own spot of what they were concerned about, what they were thankful for, what they were grateful for. I thought that was really eye-opening and, I think, helpful. And certainly, a lot of positive praise for all the work the administration, the district, and everyone, the staff, the faculty is doing to keep open. I had two quick questions that I couldn't remember. At this juncture, could parents choose to pull their kids out and go remote?
Yeah, so from the start, we've said if at any point a parent is not comfortable sending their child to school, we would accommodate them by connecting now their child and putting them in an all-remote environment.
Okay, and did we have any people making that decision and any mass numbers?
To my knowledge, to this day, no. We may have had, maybe early on, we had one or two, early on being September, first week of school, but at this point, I'm not familiar with any who are choosing to do that at this particular juncture.
Okay, and another question that's a little bit slightly off-topic, but you'll see how I got there. Is COVID having any impact on enrollment, especially in kindergarten, that you know of?
I believe so, and I would want to follow up on this, so bear with me, but it's my, in speaking with Ms. Jamon, that we actually had an increase in enrollment at the elementary school through the summer, and she had, oh geez, I, in the figure, I want to say it was 20-plus new students, in particular, families who own two homes.
Oh, okay, all right. I was thinking the other way, it was people might hold their kid back for a year.
No, it was the opposite.
Oh, really? Okay.
Now, I don't know if it was at kindergarten specifically. I do believe there were cases in kindergarten, because we talked, I recall us talking about kindergarten numbers specifically, but I know that through the summer months at the elementary level in general, we saw an uptick that, more so than what we would normally see, and our kind of generalization of it was, and through some informal discussions, that we had families who may own two homes, were deciding that their primary residence is now in our area here, and they were enrolling their kids in school here because they didn't have an option in the city.
Okay, fair. All right, thank you.
Any other questions on COVID? Okay, just a brief update on athletics. As the board's aware, and just for our community, our search process did not, did not end in yielding a successful candidate for the Director of Athletics and Dean of Students position. So we feel that at this time, it's not, it would benefit us to hold for a little while. I'm pleased to say that Mr. Goddard is going to remain with us through the month of November initially, and actually, there's an action item on tonight's agenda for you to extend Mr. Goddard's contract for a number of days to get us through the rest of the fall sports season. And we do have another individual who's interested in coming in on an interim basis, who Mr. Goddard and I will be meeting with later this week, and I'm encouraged to think is someone who would be really helpful to us through the winter sports season. So one season at a time, and we look forward to re, or beginning the search process in mid to late winter now, just to give ourselves a couple of months here before we start again. So again, would like to thank the committees who were a part of that process. I informed the committees of what transpired here and what our focus was moving forward. Obviously, anytime you are enlisting the support of parents and students in the search process that doesn't yield a successful candidate, you feel bad about that, but that's why we have a process too. We want to make sure that we get a candidate who is going to, who wants to be a part of the Haldane community in the long term. So I appreciate everybody's time. We look forward to re-engaging them in a few months, and thank Mr. Goddard for his continued service to the Haldane community. And fun thing, you know, Mr. Goddard has spent his whole career in Arlington, and we take on the Arlington, Arlington Boys and Girls Soccer Team this week, so he got them on the schedule, and he shared with me yesterday a little trash talk that he was sending Arlington's way to their administration, because our Haldane kids were going to come up to Arlington and take them on this week. So I like to, I feel good that Mr. Goddard now is, I used to say he bled maroon and gold, but now he's bleeding blue, like the rest of us. So I mean, good luck to our Boys and Girls Teams this week as they continue competition. Our track and field team has had a successful fall, and while I never thought we'd have fall sports two months ago, I was that guy saying, no way. We've made it happen, and our kids have had a good experience. It's been fun to see them compete, and they'll compete safely.
Great, thank you. Is there any communication from the public at this time? Okay, so our information reports are available for anybody to review, and we'll go into consent agenda minutes. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
We have a whole bunch of minutes here. Our minutes from October 20th, our Technology Committee minutes, our Buildings and Grounds minutes, our Code of Conduct minutes. Any discussion?
I would just say we had a very nice Code of Conduct meeting, which is my first attendance at the Code of Conduct, which was great, and there is a policy implication that we need to work through, a change in policy before we can fully roll out that into the updated Code of Conduct. So as we think about the next piece for the Policy Committee to take on, we should potentially prioritize that one, so we can get that one locked down.
Okay, yeah. Do you want to send the Policy Committee or the Committee, the Code of Conduct Committee Chair, perhaps?
Is that the one I have, Julia?
You've got it, okay.
We're on it.
Thank you, then you're on it. And the Technology Committee minutes, I was reading through those. Whew, have we bought a lot of technology. I was just seeing all the, I was like, what are the dollar signs behind that? Chromebooks, PCs, this thing. It's extensive, but so it goes. That's where we're at.
You had a good Buildings and Grounds meeting. It was far less eventful than some of previous ones from last year, because so many things were complete.
You're coming to a different.
And Tim really, you know, just drove through it with, you know, real aplomb. I will say that I know that the window replacement project is out to bid.
It's actually on for tonight. We do have a bid we're recommending to be accepted. I'll speak to it when we get there, if that's okay.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda financial, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Here is our capital project contract.
It is, sorry, just keeping up, Jen. So as the board may be aware, and as Sean duly noted, we rejected the bid last summer for the window replacement project at the elementary school. We rebid that work this fall. We received the bids that came in, and we feel that there's a stronger bid that has been made, that falls in line with our budget, or what we had budgeted for that work that's on here under Item 8 for your action tonight. And just one other note, I received a question from a community member about the length of time between when a referendum is passed and when the work gets done. And I know we've, Ann has explained this in the past, but I just want to reiterate that there is a series of information that we have to provide to New York State that our school, essentially, the Building Code Enforcement Agency is at New York State for us. It's not at the local level. So after going through that process, we then have to bid the work, and then also, there's certain time when the work can get done. So a window replacement project can get done, really, is extensive, so we have to do it in a period of extended closure, like the summer. So by not having a successful bid process last summer, it didn't allow for it to get done, like the other work that was completed. So assuming you accept the bid tonight, this will align this work up to be completed next July.
Great, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda personnel, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
New business. I'll turn it over to Ms. Platt for our CSE/CPSE placement recommendations.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby approve- of Education hereby approves the recommendations of the Committees on Special Education and Preschool Special Education as presented.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. This is a supplemental memorandum of agreement between the school board and the HFA. I'll turn it to Ms. Platt.
Be it resolved that, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the supplemental memorandum of agreement between the Haldane Board of Education and the Haldane Faculty Association dated November 3, 2020, related to the use of camera video equipment in the classroom, and authorizes the superintendent to sign the agreement on behalf of the district.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Benanté, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Just the gist of this is that by way of opening our classrooms up virtually via webcams is a change in working condition for our teachers. It's a very unique environment for them to be in, where they're working with kids virtually as well as working with students who are in front of them. So we wanted to take steps to assure our teachers and to come to an agreement that when we go through the evaluation process with our staff, the focus of our evaluation will be on what's occurring between our teachers and the students who are in front of them, and that will keep the observation process focused on that, and not how they're managing this other dynamic with our virtual learners. Although, we would note the good work that's going into that. We don't want that to be, given that there's so much new learning that's occurring on their part, we don't want that to be an obstacle for them in their mindset as they're, you know, approaching their work this year, you know, how am I going to be evaluated for working with my virtual learners? It's relevant, it's important, and I see our teachers making, you know, significant effort in doing that well. But this was one thing, if we could take off, you know, their conscience of, you know, it's like getting two observations at once instead of one, that's what we're doing here.
Can I just ask a question? I've always made assumptions as to how the observation process is scheduled and, in a normal year, works. Could you just give a 30-second of, how does it normally work?
Sure. It's, so our building administrators and myself each have a number of ops, we observe each staff twice in some capacity. One is an extended evaluation, and one is more brief. And that evaluation is, one of them is scheduled between us and the teacher, and we have a, we may have a pre-observation meeting just to talk through the lesson. So if I'm coming in to observe Mr. Hedlund, you know, you'll talk about your goals and objectives, where you are in your course, and what I'm likely to see, particular standards that this relates to, and long-term goals, and then I'll come in and facilitate the evaluation. We do have a rubric that we utilize, that's a, you know, quite prominent one, prominently utilized throughout the state, based on Charlotte Danielson's work regarding effective teaching and teaching practices. We all go through a training on the use and implementation of that rubric each year to make sure that there's reliability to its use in the evaluation process. We facilitate the evaluation, collect all the evidence as it relates to the different domains of the rubric, and then we go about and facilitate a debrief with the teacher, which includes a written evaluation in the days that follow that. So that's in a nutshell.
Great.
And we're happy, if the board desires, we can, you know, we can show you the rubric, we can give you an example of what that looks like, if you'd like, but that's the skinny act.
And just a quick question on this. If there were ever a situation where Haldane, by virtue of, for instance, the issues that you discussed earlier, went into a remote-only learning for the rest of the year, how would those evaluations be conducted?
We, at that point, would have to, and the HFA would certainly, I would imagine, would be understanding of this. We'd have to discuss now how we could facilitate the process. Now, we were in that situation last year, and we had relief from New York State on the requirement to evaluate all of our teachers, so we didn't have to navigate that between March and June, because the state said essentially, you don't have to.
Right. Because the goalposts kept moving in terms of, we may open, we may...
I don't think that would occur this year, because, you know, going into the school year, there largely was, it was anticipated that we may have to close at some point. So the, every indication I've, we've had from the state is that as much as business as usual can continue, should continue, which would include, if you're in an all-remote environment, facilitating evaluations. I don't think that'll change. So we would have to engage our unit again at that point and discuss any unique parameters that we may want to include in the evaluation process, considering whatever situation we're in at that time.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any further communication from the public? Any board reflections to share?
I would just say that, I think that last time, when the report from the audit committee happened, I don't think we ever thanked the committee. So I'd like to thank the committee. I see if I can do them all. Mr. Campenile, Mr. Daniloff, Mrs. Powell, him, well, yeah, because we have to, you, Ms. Denial, and the auditors, too. So they do a lot of work to make sure it happens. And those of us who don't know much about accounting got to ride along and sort of figure out how it all works. So thank you to the committee.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, a couple of, two things. First, a number of our students, as you noted, voted for the first time today, and it was lovely to see them sort of representing in one way or another on social media. One of my neighbors, Mason Sharply, voted for the first time today very happily with his mom, Linda. And the other thing I wanted to note is that, I just wanted to highlight that Haldane Drama is moving forward as well, and that they're doing a trio of Greek tragedies, which I think is apropos of the moment. And I'm sort of familiar with each of these versions, they're kind of contemporary responses to them, and I think it'll be perfect, and I think it's ambitious, and I think it's wonderful that we're moving forward, so just wanted to bring that up.
Great. Dr. Benanté, do you have anything to share?
No further remarks. Thank you.
Okay, guys, this is record time. 7:37. Mr. Donahue, did you have anything you wanted to share?
Not necessarily, although I do have updates on the, on the college application process, if you guys did want to hear about that.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I have the numbers right here, actually. So out of the 71 students in the senior class, 27 are applying early action or decision. 20 students have already applied early action and early decision by both the October 15th and then the November 1st and 2nd deadlines, which have just recently passed. And seven students still have upcoming early action or early decisions, early decision deadlines. And 40 students have expressed applying, expressed interest in applying for regular entry dates.
All right. Moving right along.
If you apply early action, early decision, when do you usually know? Do you know?
It's, it varies by school, and like for me, for example, the schools I apply to come out December 11th. That's when their decisions come out. But other schools like have, like wait till like January or February for early decisions.
But what a gift, if you know, right?
Exactly. Yeah, you just know.
You just know would be probably really great.
Yeah, for sure.
Great, thanks for that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, of course.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.